Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada Edmonton Centre Member Meeting. I'm Jay Lavender and I will be your host for tonight's festivities. And it's 7:30, so I will call this meeting to order. We have a couple of Centre housekeeping items to go through here, and then we will have our guest speaker, Eric Roszowski come up, and he's a longtime veteran presenter. He's been here before. No pressure there, Eric. So let's just start. The January 9th, 2023 meeting minutes were posted to the OneDrive. And so I'd just like to open it up to the floor for anyone that's reviewed them. Are there any errors and or missions for those minutes? Okay, then hearing none. Over to our General Secretary.
I move that the January 9 meeting minutes as posted to the OneDrive. Be accepted.
Thank you. Are there any secanders? In the back, Susan, Susan Brom seconds and all in favor. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. A second item on our agenda here is just the treasures report. So I'll get our treasurer up here, Jeff Whiten, to just give us a quick rundown on the
Supplies for a couple hundred bucks.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our guest speaker. And where is Sharon? Oh, there she is, Sharon.
Okay, I'm very happy to introduce our guest speaker today, Dr. Eric Roszowski. Why don't you come up here and make sure your your presentation works? Yeah. Okay, so Eric did his PhD at Berkeley and was a postdoc at Harvard and then went to UBC Okanagan where he was professor for a few years. And then I was just looking this up. It was 10 years ago that he started at the University of Alberta. So we're at his 10 year anniversary. And he's celebrating by using the James Webb Space Telescope to observe pretty much every galaxy in our, I don't know, medium near neighborhood. Friends and neighbors. He's famously a big fan of the Galaxy M33. And which many of you probably also observed. And he's an expert on star formation. Most of his research in the past is actually in radio astronomy and what's called submillimeter astronomy. But he also does optical and infrared. As we will both learn more about in a couple seconds as he works on his getting connection. Okay, so I am pleased that he's here, and I think he's probably ready to take over.
Really? Okay. That checkbox and share a screen. Okay. But first off, thank you all so much for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. Again, I think the last time I was here, I spoke about the search for extraterrestrial intelligence. And I guess today we'll be talking about the search for the thing that breaks our modern theories of cosmology. So it's hopefully an exciting presentation. And I have been one of the Canadians who's been incredibly fortunate to work directly with the James Webb Space Telescope or the JWST during its first year of operations. And I'm really grateful for this opportunity. And still more than a little bit kind of amazed that we're here and operating with these telescopes. So today, what I'd like to talk about is about infrared astronomy. You all spend a wonderful chunk of your lives going out and using the eyeballs in your head and sometimes the cameras to carry out optical astronomy. And I want to talk about why infrared astronomy is very similar to that in a lot of ways, but also very different. And what we get out of carrying out that infrared astronomy. So you're going to recognize a lot of stuff that we're talking about because the similarities are there and in place. So infrared light is something that we didn't really have a great idea about until the 19th century. And this is a likely apocryphal picture of William Herschel being very erudite and contemplating the you know, origins of infrared astronomy. And he was doing actually a very simple experiment that you can see in this wood block here. I like it because you know, this kind of thing that would make a great lab report presentation at the university. And what you can see is that he's taken sunlight that's coming in through a glass prism that's mounted on the mounted in a window blocked off most of the rest of the window and then defracted the light through that prism and sorted it out into the colors. And in the bottom corner, you can sort of see that here has a bunch of thermometers. These are mercury style thermometers, the likes of which we rarely get to see anymore. And he held it under trying to determine the temperatures of different light are really the energy content of it. And his discovery was what happens if you hold it out beyond the red edge of the rainbow? And he discovered sure enough that there's a nice amount of energy coming from the sunlight there that our eyes could not perceive. And so this was infrared or sometimes thermal radiation. And you can actually do this yourself. If you're a teacher or you have access to thermometers, you can go out with a prism, set up a little box and go and discover infrared light yourself. So I always like to give people some tools that they need in case society collapses. They can go and reconstruct vital experiments of the scientific revolution. So this is yours for tonight. Um, interesting fact that when I was putting together this talk, I didn't know is like, where did ultraviolet light come from? So what's out beyond the blue? And the conjecture, of course, at the time was if there's a bunch of heat radiation out there and beyond the red, what's beyond the blue? Why it must be cooling radiation because you know, that's the way science proceeds. Turns out that's also that that one of these theories was better than the other is the upshot of it. So yeah, the fullness of time has kind of illustrated that we actually have the optical astronomy is just a narrow, wonderful portion of the entire electromagnetic spectrum. And you can see sort of illustrated here in this nice little NASA graphic, essentially the wavelength of electromagnetic radiation. And the optical represents just a tiny little section of the electromagnetic wave spectrum, which is measured by how long or short the distance between successive peaks or troughs of this electromagnetic wave is. And you know, on one end, we have the best astronomy, radio astronomy. Sorry. And then out here on the other end is ultraviolet and gamma ray and X-ray astronomy. And the, you know, right here, just beyond the optical towards the red side is the infrared. So you know, this is all just part of one wonderful part of electromagnetic astronomy. And you know, astronomy is even pushing beyond the detection of light these days. And so what I like to point out as we sort of look at this full spectrum is that there's this kind of shadow gray background back here. And these are showing the transmission of the Earth's atmosphere. And so places where this little peak here is very tall, light doesn't get through the atmosphere. And so the radio is wonderful because we can see space in radio waves. But that's not true of the rest of the electromagnetic spectrum. So out here on the radio end, we have, we go from a very long wavelength radiation through the optical infrared goes sailing by to be high energy out here with the ultraviolet and the gamma rays. So this is all just part of astronomy writ large. And we can connect this to various size scales and energy scales that are here. And we often give the names of the electromagnetic spectrum sort of bands, specific wave bands. So when I'm talking about infrared astronomy, I'm talking about the light that has a wavelength typically from the longest wavelength our eye can see is the shortest infrared wavelength. That's about 700 nanometers or seven tenths of a micron. All the way out to about 100 to 150 microns or basically a tenth of a millimeter at that scale. So the reason why we bring up and sort of separate into these classifications of astronomy is this is how we professional astronomers, indeed, I guess, all astronomers like to describe telescopes, because a telescope is very simply described as the type of radiation it detects. X-ray telescopes detect X-rays, radio telescopes detect radio waves, and visible wavelength radiation gets detected by optical telescopes. So we basically say, if we're talking about a Kaya telescope, it's the light it detects. Now, it's kind of interesting because you have to rely on very different technologies. So at one end to detect radiation. So we're used to mirrors and CCD detectors and all that in the optical. But often like the high energy end, you can't actually use a mirror the way you normally would. In fact, yeah, if you just had like a standard concave reflected mirror, the X-ray would go through the mirror, which makes it into a very bad telescope component. So instead you have these very light grazing incidence mirrors that you do. So the optics of X-ray telescopes are kind of these cool little concentric, very gently focusing mirrors that sort of coax radiation down into the detector. On the other end of the spectrum, you have things that are basically satellite dishes or radar dishes. And they are these large bowls of basically metal. You can build a radio telescope out of screen door material. Because it's essentially a perfectly smooth surface for the long wavelength radiation here. And so these telescopes all look very different. And the engineering and design of telescopes across the electromagnetic spectrum inherits from the radiation, the type of radiation it's trying to observe. I always liked that this is, you know, one of my fondest things about radio astronomy is we really don't care about the weather at all. Observe during the day, we observe during the rain, thunderstorms can be problematic. But yeah, it's a, it's a 24/7, 8,100 hour a year kind of operation. So yeah, the radio telescopes work very, you know, they work throughout here. So given all of this, I want to motivate for you as to why we want a space telescope. And I kind of alluded to it a little earlier, which is this big gray band in the background. There's just some parts of this atmosphere that we cannot see through. In fact, you can really only see from ground based astronomy here in the radio band and a little bit in the optical band. And then in the infrared, there's these large kind of, there's occasional windows. But for what the JWST is operating in, the atmosphere is opaque. So we really do need another telescope out there in space so that it's above that pesky terrestrial atmosphere. So this is one of the images. It's a graphical rendition of the deployed JWST. And we've probably seen this if you have paid any attention to astronomy news in the past 12 to 14 months. You've seen these pictures. Is that a good guess? I can't see you. Yeah. All right. Okay. Yeah. So you've seen these pictures. We haven't actually hit no picture of the actual telescope itself. Because of course it deployed and unfolded into this wonderful kind of origami telescope. The deployment well out beyond the region where we could actually take a picture of it. And the last picture of JWST is this fairly boring looking like here's a garbage can flying off into, you know, beyond the moon. But this is largely the construction of the telescope here where we have a large primary mirror and a secondary mirror. And the telescope looks a lot like an optical telescope. It's kind of fascinating because we don't have to do any of these clever tricks with astronomy with, you know, how we designed the optics of the telescope. And instead it's really just a primary mirror, a secondary, and you know, puts down and all the instrumentation sits here in the back. And the thing at the bottom is a solar shield that ends up basically passively cooling the telescope down to very low temperatures. We'll talk a bit about why that's important in a few minutes. I think the only peculiar thing you might notice about the telescope is it's gold. You don't normally do this in the optical because this is acknowledging that you're reflecting only very specific colors of light. You are basically only reflecting long wavelength radiation. And then the blue light hitting the primary mirror ends up getting absorbed, which is why it appears gold. Turns out that doesn't matter too much. The optical properties of gold are excellent in the infrared. Better than aluminum or silver or any of the standard optical, optical coatings. Because they, yeah, they end up having absorption features in the infrared that, you know, make your mirror colored. So we go with gold in the infrared. Um, yeah, so you know, why do you need, why do you want a new space telescope mom? Can we have a new space telescope? Now you already have a space telescope at home. So why do we need a new space telescope? Well, this is, you know, our hometown hero, or at least our home orbit hero, the Hubble Space Telescope. And it has some notable differences with respect to JWST. And the first is it's bigger. These, this nice schematic from the CSA kind of illustrates the primary mirror of the telescope. This is Hubble is a two and change meter telescope across and JWST is a full six meters across. It's a bigger telescope and that gives us two main advantages. First, it's a bigger light bucket. I do not have to convince this audience that more aperture is better, right? Yeah, that's why I thought. Second is we have better resolution. And the resolution in space is fundamentally set by the optics of the telescope. We don't have seeing in space. All right, there's what great thing about being above the whole atmosphere. We are instead limited by the wave properties of light propagating through the optics of the telescope. And this leads to blurring of the image from the in the wave interference as light moves around. So if you take a Hubble Space Telescope image and 2.2 meter telescope, this is Sharon called it out, my favorite galaxy M33 viewed with the Hubble Space Telescope. And as we go to longer wavelengths, we get proportionally worse resolution, longer wavelengths, bigger waves moving through the telescope, more interference. And the way you beat that in terms of optics is to have a larger aperture. So this allows us to have a very high resolution. It's the equivalent of having excellent seeing in space, not limited by the optics of the telescope. So this is a meme that my graduate student made, which is when you have an infrared space telescope and you go to a larger aperture, you get a much better image. And so this is thing on the left is Tobey Maguire, I think. I don't know. Thing on the right is Galaxy. And this is the, the top image is a previous generation image of one of our nearby neighbors. This is, I think, the NGC 7496, which is a southern target, I believe. Um, and so it doesn't have an M. And so then the image is JWST. And these are the actual images from these two telescopes at their native resolution. And it sharpens things up really nicely. So we'll look at some pictures in a little bit more detail later. The other big advantage of an infrared space telescope is perhaps not surprisingly, it observes in the infrared. And so in covering the electromagnetic spectrums, this kind of switched the direction from the graphics I was showing earlier. The Hubble Space Telescope is an ultraviolet optical, and it does cover a bit into the near infrared. JWST picks up and indeed overlaps part of the wavelength coverage of the HST and goes all the way out into the long wavelength infrared out to about 25 microns. And then the previous mission that I'll sometimes cite, like what happened previously, covers all the way out to 160 microns, smaller aperture. The infrared is astrophysically very exciting and very important. And for three real reasons that we can summarize as the infrared sees cool objects, the infrared light can pass through dust. And the infrared light is able to see ordinary visible light that starlight gives off after it has been affected by cosmological redshift. And I kind of want to talk about each of these in time. By showing you a light bulb. This is a forbidden light bulb these days in that it is, it is an incandescent light bulb. And it makes light by incandescing, which means that you just run an electric current up through the bottom. Yeah, all right. But it made light by heating up the tungsten filament between the two poles of the electrical circuit. And that little resistor would heat up and would get to be about 3,000 Kelvin and it would give off light. It would also, if you have ever touched a light bulb while it has been on recently or is on, it gives off a lot of heat. That's because it's got a 3,000 Kelvin hot object inside it. And so if you touch it, it gives off quite a bit of heat and a bit of light. And indeed, this is ultimately why light bulbs have moved away from incandescent light bulb technology is that you, if you want light, you do not need this to heat your house as well. Though probably was pretty nice at the time. Um, all of this radiation is a kind of thermal radiation. And so it is the radiation given off by all hot objects and hot objects that are, the hotter an object is, the more light it gives off and the bluer the light that gives off. So I'll give a few examples of that. But one of our most famous hot objects that we care a lot about is the sun. And so this is a graph here showing the wavelength of light coming off of the sun and plotted as a function of how much radiation is falling here on, this is reference to the top of the atmosphere. So the actual white spectrum there shows that there's a lot of light. And most of the light is here in this sort of 400 to 700 nanometer range. Which is right here in the optical window through the Earth's atmosphere, we can see the sun. And it most of the radiation comes through here. And so that means that if you are a creature deciding to use the ambient radiation in your environment, you know, evolving in that direction, that you can use the ambient radiation in your environment to see things. This is a good section of the spectrum to pay attention to because there's a lot of radiation here from the sun. This nice 6,000 ish Kelvin source here. Now, if you have cooler objects, they give off less light and that light tends to be redder. And so this shows the corresponding curves for a bunch of different temperatures of objects, slightly different Y axis units. But the X axis is largely the same here. And what you're seeing here is that things get cooler, they get fainter, and then they get redder. So the radiation moves off towards the right in the graph. So most of the radiation is coming out there. And indeed, this is the infrared exactly where we're observing which JWST. So broadly, oh, very helpfully illustrated, this is where the visible light is and where the infrared light is. And indeed, if you've been and shop for light bulbs lately, you are familiar with this content because these are the numbers that are printed on the light bulbs. If you go and you say this is a 6,000 Kelvin LED light bulb and your local hardware store, you will, that just means the color temperature of the light that's coming out. And so most people are used to 3,000 Kelvin lights in their house, which are that sort of cool, those sort of redder, warmer colors. And that's because we're, you know, grew up with incandescent light bulbs. And so we're sort of used to that being the interior color of light. But if you find a 6,000 Kelvin, it's much closer to the color of sunlight. And so this color temperature scale is really reflecting the underlying physics of a black body emitter. So one thing I want to park into your mind that we need to sort of pay attention to is that, well, one, the colors of stars are different. And that is reflecting their surface temperatures. Where hot stars are predominantly bluer and cool stars are predominantly redder. And the thing that you, we want to bank for future reference is also that those larger stars live for a cosmically very short period of time. Lifetime of our sun is about 10 billion years. The lifetime of a high mass star is a factor of 1,000 to 3,000 times shorter than that, a few million years. And so these hottest stars, they give off huge amounts of radiation. They give off predominantly in the blue and the ultraviolet radiation because they are very hot. And we see these in the spectra of stars where this is a graph of all the different types of stars, given the sort of more sort of traditional alphabetical classification scheme plotted here in the optical. And what you can sort of see as we go from hot stars down to lower stars, all the radiation is moving from the ultraviolet section of the spectrum off into the infrared. And so the coolest stars don't even start getting bright until we're into the infrared. So we now have a bit of a connection between the types of telescopes that we're observing, using to observe, and the temperatures of the objects that are giving off the radiation. Where high energy radiation comes from X-ray telescopes or it gets observed by things like X-ray telescopes. And that's traditionally seeing or typically seeing stuff that has temperatures of million Kelvin. And so some of my colleagues like Sharon have come here and talked about objects that have million Kelvin surface temperatures. They care a lot about the X-rays. Stars like, objects like the stars, surface temperatures about 10,000 Kelvin show up in the optical readily detectable using optical telescopes. And then the coldest objects in the universe, 10 degrees above absolute zero, those are best detected by radio telescopes. So that means that infrared telescopes allow us to see somewhere in between that sort of 10 Kelvin to about 10,000 Kelvin kinds of objects. So we see cool objects. There's some interesting objects that are cool. Planets, relatively warm gas, protostones, all those are great. The next problem that we want to address with the infrared is that there's a lot of dust in space. This is one of my favorite pictures of space. This is often the constellation of Perseus. There's a couple of constellations here. This is, or sorry, asterisms here. This is IC348. It's a small stellar cluster. And in front of all of these wonderful young clusters is a bunch of dust. And so these smudges that you sort of see on the screen here are all basically dust in space. And dust is fundamentally stellar pollution. It is this stuff that is given off at the end of a star's life. And it's essentially soot. It's the stuff that you find on the inside of your chimney at a wood burning fireplace. It's basically what dust grains are. They're 1 to 30 microns across, some are even smaller dust grains. This is an actual interstellar dust grain that was captured in our solar system on a sample return mission. And so this is what an actual microscopy image of a dust grain looks like from space. But there's tons of this stuff out there and it just gets in the way. Lots of observations just are contaminated by dust. Here's a picture of a massive star in the middle of polluted. It's giving off these sort of shells of radio of material at the end of its life. It's giving off these sort of shells of radio of material at the end of its life. And the light is sort of reflected off the interiors of the shells. So it's this beautiful series of concentric rings and are concentric. It looks like a bullseye or a tree rings or something. Because the time interval between when these shells are thrown off is steady. It's a wave. And it throws off a bit at a time. But there it is, making dust. But infrared radiation, because it's longer wavelength, doesn't interact as strongly with the dust. And so that means the infrared radiation can pass through the dust and see things that are otherwise obscured. And so this is an image that is made in optical light shown there on the left. And on the right is one of the bands that they're using to make the image is an infrared light. And you can sort of see that the blocked stars behind the cloud on the left start to show up in on the right. So this is one of the big advantages of moving into the infrared is that interstellar dust allows us. Or we can see and peer through interstellar dust. So, it's great. So we can finally see into new places. Then the last thing is the cosmological redshift. And so I'm going to give you cosmology cartoon styles. This is the universe. As you might be able to tell. Uh, and the universe is expanding. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go down to the universe photocopier machine and inflate the universe by ten percent. And I'm going to say that those are just for purposes of illustration, going to draw this universe expanded by ten percent. As. As. Yellow stars. And what I've done here is I've expanded the universe by ten percent. And then I've centered the yellow star on the yellow star in the middle. And this leads to an interesting phenomenon, whereas if you look at the yellow star in the middle. Everything in the universe appears to have moved away from it. This is just fundamentally where, you know, if you stay at one place in the universe and the universe expands around you. Everything seems to move away from you. The other interesting thing is the farther away an object is, the more it appears to have moved during this expansion. So this object down here has moved farther than this little object here. The final thing that's interesting about the universe expandomatic is that I can pick another place. And down here, I've locked into the lower uh left hand corner. I've lined up the two stars there. And you see that everything here is moving away from this bottom star. And again, the farther away you are, the bigger the expansion. And so these are the features that we see associated with a cosmological expansion. And as we look out and we observe the galaxies around us at significant distances away. We see exactly this phenomenon. Things that are farther away appear to be moving faster away from us. This is the fundamental observation that Edwin Hubble made in cataloguing galaxies. And realizing the, it could be connected to the expansion of the universe. Oh, I did it again, except this time it's in the upper right hand corner. Everything's moving away from that. So every observer in my model universe feels like the universe is expanding away from them. And it follows this kind of relationship between distance and recession. So, everything seems to be at the center of the universe and the more distant systems are moving away faster. So this is a feature that we see in our universe. And I have a little movie here that illustrates what happens. And this is kind of a challenging movie to watch, so I'm going to play it twice. Because what's actually happening here is kind of, yeah. What you're seeing here is the underlying grid represents the expansion of space. And so this is how things are moving apart. There's a light wave between a distant galaxy and Earth here. Let's go back and watch it again. And as the expansion of space is moving, it pulls the light wave apart and stretches it out to longer wavelength. And this rendition has colored that light red, indicating it is moving from blue light to red light. Intrinsicly, because the light is intrinsically linked to the universe and it expands underneath it. So it essentially is stretching out the light wave here. Final view. Notice that despite the weirdness, the actual sizes of the Earth and the galaxy aren't changing at all. So they're fixed. It's the space underneath it that's moving. It only seems like they're getting smaller because the reference lines of the grids are expanding. So this is a peculiar thing about the cosmological redshift. And so the key thing here is that light that was visible when it was emitted in the optical waveband. Will appear as infrared light after the cosmological expansion. So critically, stars give off a lot of optically visible light. They're hot, ten thousand Kelvin, five thousand Kelvin stars. After the cosmological redshift kicks in, all that light is stretched out into the infrared. So if we want to look at the most distant galaxies that have had the most significant cosmological redshift. We need to study them in the infrared. Okay. It's almost time for some good pictures. But I wanted to remind you of one or two final things. I'm going to be showing you some beautiful color images that are eyes. Because they are not actual red, green, blue light like your eyes would perceive. These are false color images. And we are compositing often three separate wavebands together to form what we call a true color image here. So what we'll do is we'll take one band is a blue light. Uh, some band we will then say, okay, we'll color this as green. And then we'll color this in red. Because this is a hack to make our visual system respond and infer information from light that our eyes cannot perceive. I'll often contrast this with something that I'll call a false color image, which is an image like this. Also, one of my favorite pictures of space. This is a galaxy or is a molecular cloud in our galaxy. It's busy forming stars. That's a separate talk altogether. But this color that we're putting in here. What this color we're putting in here is just basically a way to represent the intensity of the radiation. And white versus red just indicates how bright this is. This is really a black and white image. There's not much color in it. Actually, not much information in the colors here, the way there is in this image down here. Okay. So. I'm gonna start out with my favorite image from JD was T so far. Whoop, sorry, it's not this one. I don't have my notes on this screen, so I don't know what's coming next. It's a, it's a surprise for me. Anyways, what you're seeing here is one of the first early release images from JD was T. Probably have seen it, I believe is on the front page in color of several uh newspapers. But what you're seeing here is the infrared image of a nearby star forming region. Where high mass stars are giving off lots of ultraviolet radiation. And that's shown here in this sort of cleared region. And then these cosmic cliffs, as they're so called, represent the gas that's being burnt away by this radiate, by the radiation here. And so the dust, which was normally blocked in the visible, is actually starting to get hot enough that it gets lit up. In the infrared. And we can also see some material here that you can actually see through. So all these stars down here at the bottom, we can start to see through these, the sort of wispy veil of material in the infrared. To the stars behind us. And you start to see stuff carved away uh here. So this uh. This is probably a more famous representation of the exact same phenomenon. This is an Eagle Nebula. And if you've been doing astronomy longer or as long as I have. You'll know that there's a very famous image from the Hubble Space Telescope of the same region. This is called the pillars of creation. And what you're seeing here again is there's a high mass star off to the upper right corner of the image. And its radiation is boiling off this natal, this, this cloud that was forming stars around it. So the high mass star formed, it's necessarily young because it's a very short lifetime. So if we're seeing the high mass star, it must have been formed in the past million years. Uh, and it is blasting away the, uh, these pillars of creation. And so I want to use this to actually do, uh, show you the Hubble image. So this is probably the picture that you're used to seeing from Hubble. And if we go back, you get a completely different view with JD was T. And I want you to just pay attention to the number of stars in the sort of core of the image. Now, so this region right around here. And if you go back to the JD of T image, you just start to see through them so well. So there's the Hubble image. Then, let's do the same thing here where we can just look through and you just see. Hundreds of, I think there's like ten thousand stars that just emerged that you couldn't see in the Hubble image in the optical light. But now because we can see through the dust, we peer straight through this cloud and see all this material in the background. Alright, now we come to the best picture. Because I have the good fortune of working on the team that took these pictures. And yeah, I spent a lot of last summer making these pretty, making these images that we then handed off to far more aesthetically talented people than I am. Who then made the images that you see here. This is the nearby galaxy M seventy four, which is the Phantom Galaxy. And I, I know it as NGC six two eight, but it's a beautiful spiral galaxy near the celestial equator. So I think it could be visible from here. And what we see is this gorgeous spiral pattern here. And this is the Hubble image. So what you're seeing is what you saw, what you saw for a long time in the past. This is the actual Hubble picture, optical light. It's, you know, beautiful dust lanes you can see right here. I want you to pay attention as I transition and do the crossfade to the JD was T image. Watch the dust lanes. I'm going to put my mouse on this one right here. And I'm going to say, okay, here's a dust line right here. Let's switch over. And then you see this in the JD receipt band. And you see that what is dark in the Hubble bands lights right up in the JD of T. And that's because the dust grains are mixed in. The smallest dust grains are actually large molecules, you know, with hundred thousand atoms in them. And they, uh, when they are hit by ultraviolet radiation, they give off very bright light in the near infrared. And that's what we see. And so it's this small admixture of molecules with the dust that's getting heated up. And it shows this beautiful image of the galaxy revealing essentially everything that you couldn't see in the optical. And this was just a jaw dropping image, both just, you know, I think it's beautiful aesthetically. But it scientifically has really driven a lot of discovery here. And the thing that really brought our mind together or brought our minds together is something you couldn't see very well. Is if you look, there's all these holes in the image. So it's not where we see the beautiful light, but where we don't, that got us so excited. And you'll notice that there's these large cavities in the galaxy. And there's actually, if you look at them, the image here, uh, the sort of yellowish orange color is where the hottest parts of the dust are found. Those are associated with young high mass stars that have just formed. And they're giving off huge amounts of radiation. They're carving away all of the gas and dust in space. Now we can see this on the galactic scale. So right here, one of these pixels in my image is that cosmic cliffs or the Eagle Nebula shown here again. This is just played out, but this is now on a three thousand light year scale. This is a giant bubble that's been blown. It's three thousand light years across. From one side to the other, driven by clusters of young high mass stars. And this really just showed us that galaxies, you look at them in these beautiful, almost static images. But on the million year time scales, they are bubbling, boiling, turning over pots of gas. That are really being constantly stirred up by the stars. And so this is what we're working on right now. Next week I have to go off to a team. I don't have to. I have the privilege of going off to a team meeting where we're really going to put down and try to pin down the physics. Of how this galaxy is boiling around. I can tell you about these if you are very excited about the wisps in between that aren't the bubbles. But there's, there's so many pictures in space to see. So we're seeing basically galaxies in a completely new light carved up by the high mass stars. Carving out these huge bubbles and just showing that a galaxy's gas is, it's kind of a violent turbulent place. But over long periods of time. One of the other really exciting things that is coming out of JWST is the study of exoplanets. So planets beyond our solar system. And the thing that's really exciting and JWST is very good at is studying exoplanet atmospheres. And so what we're usually studying, want to show you some of their initial results here. That aren't as visually striking but are scientifically quite compelling. What we're seeing is we see, we're seeing a planet that's undergoing a mini eclipse. It's passing between the host star in the background and us along the line of sight or JD was T. And the planet is passing in front and it has an atmosphere. And so we use the background star as a lamp to sort of shine through the atmosphere and study the colors of light that these planets are showing. And so you watch, basically you make a measurement with the planet not in the way, that's the star's spectrum. And then you watch the planet come in front of it and you say that's the star plus planet spectrum. And so then you can look for the signatures of things that aren't there in the stellar spectrum. So you, this is what the actual data look like. You just watch a star over time. So this is a graph of time in Baltimore, Maryland, where the telescope control system is. And the light drops down, goes through the eclipse and pops back up. And then what you do is you measure that at a bunch of different colors. And you say, okay, well, what are the light at the different colors of light? And use that to infer the amount of light blocked by the planet at different wavelengths. And you can associate the blocked colors with different molecules. So water, carbon monoxide, some potassium. It shows up here. It says a graph of the blocks as a function of wavelength. What's neat about this is that right there in the JD was T band are some very interesting lines for a planet like our Earth. One that I always catches my mind is ozone. And ozone is a molecule that you only see if there's a lot of free oxygen in an atmosphere. And so this represents a very interesting biomarker. And so one of the things that JVC has not done yet, you would have known about it. But has a chance to do is actually see biomarkers in other atmospheres of other planets. Free oxygen from in a plat- a planet, which may be an indicator of life. So this could, this stands the chance of being kind of the highest risk, highest reward science out of astrophysics. Yeah, skip this just in the interest of time. I'm going to finally talk about the third pillar of really exciting things from JD was T. Which are the distant universe. And so this is studying galaxies at cosmological times, back at the very beginning of the universe. And JD was T because it is seeing the infrared light. It sees the starlight in the optical that has been shifted into the infrared as it has traveled across the universe to us. And so the way we are really getting a lot of advantage of this is to use gravitational lens systems. And a gravitational lens is this massive galaxy. This thing is sitting here in the foreground. And then there's all these galaxies in the background. And you'll see that they're sort of distended out here into little arcs and stretch out. That's because the gravity of the galaxy itself is bending the light and focusing in it. It's basically giving us this wonderful amplification scheme. That allows us to see the light from the background galaxies. In particular, the ones from the very beginning of the universe. Oh, how nice. I zoomed in and saw this. So this field gave us a lot of our very good initial detections of these highest redshift systems. And so one of the things that has gotten astronomy really excited is this little box right here. Number two. And so, and there's number one is, uh, over there, there's number one. So these little smudges that show up in these uh lensing systems from very distant galaxies. And oh, here's some more. And those smudges are showing up and will. And what we can do is we've take the picture colors in a bunch of different images of light. And we look for the signatures of stellar spectra that have this sort of sharp edge in their, in their emission right here. And then that corresponds to after being redshifted to specific wave, wave bands of light. So this is an actual astronomical paper image that are showing at the different JWST bands. This is 900 nanometers out to 4.4 microns. And what you see in this that you want to sort of pay attention to is this little dot that sort of shows up. And that only shows up if we're observing galaxies at very large distances way across the universe. This is the characteristic signature. And we can use this method to find a lot of them. And we'll often quote this in what we call values of redshift, which is how much that wavelength is stretched. And the rule of thumb that I always have, it's Sharon can yell at me during questions, but this isn't quite right where we're, you know, in the scales that we're going for. Which is basically if you see anybody say, oh, it's a redshift of seven or a redshift of two or whatever. I like to map that to how old the universe was when it formed. Then you just have, it's a, it's not the worst of math. It's, you take the age now, which is 14 billion years. And you divided a one over one plus the redshift. And so that's, you know, basically ages of one to one and a half billion years. And so we're finding galaxies that were formed one to one and a half billion years after the universe. And that is a problem. Because we have this gorgeous model for how the universe evolves. And I've heard it's the Lambda cold dark matter model. And it says how quickly structure forms in the universe. And the answer is not this fast. It's very challenging to make galaxies one to one and a half billion years after the big bang, especially the big ones that we're seeing. And so just to give you a sense of this beautiful model, I'm going to close out with fake data. This is a movie. This is a numerical simulation of the evolution of the universe. And I'm going to stop the movie right about here. What you're seeing in this movie is a three dimensional rendering of the dark matter in the universe. And the dark matter is controlling how quickly structures form. It collects and it forms these gravitational wells. The material falls into and it starts to build up galaxies over time. And I've stopped this at 1 billion years. And JWST is finding galaxies that are fully formed and big and giving off lots of light now. But our models don't have those galaxies in them. This is the best, the best simulation of the universe that supercomputers can buy. They're not there yet. Nope. I got questions too, but yeah. So it actually takes a good bit of time before the biggest galaxies get going. And you'll see it, they'll turn on as we're going through this. Where you can start to see those are individual galaxies they're collecting. And they eventually start turning on the ratio. So right now we're showing the dark matter. And then right about now that we start to see galaxies really start to give off radiation. And that's shown by these other colors coming in. And so you can sort of see, oh, there's these beautiful outflows. And so this, this model is just, you know, it's amazing. They've just simulated the universe from start to finish. But they can't make galaxies fast enough. We put in all the physics that we understand. And we can't quite get the galaxies early enough in the universe. And so this might seem like a problem. This is really exciting. Because it gives us insight as to how we can drive our understanding of the universe forward. Because we do this not by having things that agree with us, but having things that disagree. And I think we're starting to get that with J W S T. So I'll stop now and take your questions.
All right, we certainly have time for a few questions. Does anybody have any questions? Over here.
Thanks. Presumably your detection of planets is, is also a function of the size of the star. So what are the smallest planets by comparison to the star size that you can detect? We can detect.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. We're actually able to detect slightly sub earth mass planets in very special circumstances. We have to wait, you have to get, in order to get like, for example, the eclipses that I was showing. That means that the plane of the orbital plane of the planetary system has to be aligned perfectly with Earth. So we're missing lots. But our sensitivity is such that people are getting down to about sub earth, not quite Martian scale, but sub earth. I think there's like one or two at that mass scale. But most of the things that we're detecting tend to be from basically Neptune's up to several Jupiter's in mass. So those are the easier planets because they block a lot more amounts of light because they're big. And because they really pull the star around, which allows us to see the influence of them. So yeah, we're gradually improving the witch stars that we, which planets we can see. And they're all, they're all weird and special. We cannot see Earth yet. Something that has a one astronomical unit orbit around its planet and is Earth size. We, we aren't there yet. That's kind of a 2040s, 2050s kind of scale. So yeah.
Okay, we have one more over here.
Yeah, you were talking about the age at which galaxies start popping up in the universe. How old is the universe when those galaxies should be forming according to the present theory?
About 2 billion years, two and a half billion years. They should start kicking in and getting the galaxies that we're seeing. And so having things show up at one, one and a half is problematic.
That means that there's interesting doors to open.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, probably have time for a couple more. Also Frank, if there's any on the chat, just let me know and I'll. Oh my. Alan asks, are there observatory, are there observations James Webb can make that would help resolve the Hubble tension? The differences in the Hubble constant as measured by different methods?
Absolutely. Yeah. So a lot of what I'm talking about here at the end with the studies of very distant galaxies, that's going to allow us to push some of the methods that we're using to sort of build up one line of the Hubble tension, which is basically you can measure the expansions of the universe through two different routes. And they don't quite agree. One sort of measures the value of this parameter called the Hubble parameter of 68. And one measures is about 71. Doesn't seem like a large difference, but it's starting to become significant. And by pushing one of those lines of reasoning out to farther and farther objects, which JD will be able to do, will be able to kind of see if they arc towards convergence. But that tension may actually be deeply linked to the concerns that we're seeing about how quickly galaxies form.
Okay, we have time for one more.
Um, it might be hard to get the slides back up, but maybe we can sort of remember. You had the nice picture of M74.
Yep.
And then it looks like it is going to happen. So I can ask maybe with that up there. Well, maybe not. I can still ask the question.
I'm looking at it. It's gorgeous.
So the, the central regions became much clearer in the JWST and looked very point like.
Yeah.
So I just wondered if that was, you know, the central black hole.
Ah, yes. You've wandered into a narrow range of my expertise here.
I'll share it to you.
Yeah. Well, in particular, we did a specific study on the nuclear cluster here. So what you're seeing is actually the stars around, sorry, the stars in a central stellar cluster. And there is a black hole in there, but the stars that we see, but the light that we see is basically a bunch of stars that are around the black hole. And we think that these nuclear clusters, they form together with the black hole. Essentially material that is falling into the black hole over the course of the galaxy's lifetime. Some of it stops and forms like it forms stars before it falls or it, instead of falling in, it forms stars. And the cluster builds up around the black hole. So there's, we think that is the, yeah, that is the black hole. Or it hosts the black hole, but it's a stellar cluster. Sorry. Oh, I get what was happening. My bad.
Okay. Well, one word is fascinating in my mind. So thank you very much again. If we can give another round of applause. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you so much for having me.
Okay, while Frank's getting that agenda back up there, I'll just mention that again, that if you're interested in learning about spectroscopy and stellar spectroscopy, that sort of thing, didn't stay tuned because we're planning a couple of, I'll call them beginner workshops anyway. And if you can do astro imaging, you can do spectroscopy. So look forward to that happening later this year. Okay, we're going to take a little bit of a break here. And but before we do that, I thought we would try to do something fun. So I thought we'd do a little fun interaction here of doing some astronomical trivia. Before we go on the break. So there's your picture. Frank, question is who am I? And we'll get the answer to you or we'll look for the answer in the second half of the meeting. So we'll take a quick break right now, maybe 10 minutes. And let's get back here at 8:45. Okay, we'll get started with the second half. So again, it's relatively new, but I think well received real treat for everyone. And that's Orla's musical and yeah.
Well, we're trying to bring up my presentation, which is on a PowerPoint. It's, um, over the past while I've been putting together, after I retired, I've been putting together some music videos that I've been working on. Oh, since way back since I started getting involved with astronomy. And in retirement, I've put them, I've been trying to put them together and presenting them here. So this is, is going to be my 12th presentation to you guys. It kind of fits in with the guest speaker, which was on the James Webb. My presentation tonight is on the Hubble Space Telescope. So and I guess the Hubble, I, you could think of this as being maybe the 33rd anniversary of the Hubble launch. I'm not sure. I, I thought about it this afternoon. I said, I should probably have presented this in March because it's on March 24th that the Hubble was, was, was launched. I'm pretty sure that everyone in the audience tonight has some level of familiarity with the Hubble Space Telescope. The Hubble telescope is named after the American astronomer Edwin Hubble, who is best known for his use of Cepheid variables to show that the spiral nebula were actually distant galaxies. And for providing evidence that the recession velocity of galaxies increases with their distance from the Earth, suggesting that the universe is expanding. The Hubble Space Telescope was launched into space on April 24th, 1990, on the space shuttle Discovery. It was deployed on the following day and entered service a month later with an orbital altitude of 535 kilometers just above the Earth's atmosphere. Hubble orbits Earth at a speed of 27,000 kilometers per hour and completes one orbit approximately every 95 minutes. Unless the telescope receives another service mission, its orbit will slowly decay and is expected to meet its end somewhere between 2030 and 2040. Over its life, Hubble has captured more than a million spectacular images of the night sky. This song is dedicated to the astounding scientific achievements of the Hubble Space Telescope and the team of scientists who built and operated.
Thank you, Orla. Very good. All right. Again, thank you very. Again, thank you very much, Orla. It's a nice addition to our meetings. Trying to get this to scroll. Uh, all right, let's do it that way. Okay. Our next presenter is, uh, Mark Zelchik with the, uh, Book of the Month.
Good evening. Greetings from Berta Beltran and I, co-librarians at the Lamp lighter Memorial Library, which is just off the entrance here to the Spadari Theater. Tonight's, uh, Book of the Month is Asteroids and Dwarf Planets by Roger Dymock. Next month, on the first day of the spring, on March twenty-first, the asteroid series at magnitude six point nine reaches opposition in the constellation Virgo. There's two things wrong with that statement. What are they? First of all, first day of the spring is on the twentieth, not the twenty-first. Second thing is the asteroid series. Series is no longer considered an asteroid. It is a dwarf planet. In fact, this book is already kind of dated and it was only published in twenty-ten. According to our very own observer's handbook, we're not even supposed to use the term asteroids anymore. Anyways, to help distinguish between planets, dwarf planets and whatnot, check out this month's Book of the Month, available after tonight's meeting. Asteroids and Dwarf Planets by Roger Dymock. The book is part of the collection of recently departed Mike Noble. Alistair Ling picked out this and several other books from Mike's extensive collection of astronomy books. So anyone interested in taking out this book, it's available after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. All right. Okay. We're now to one of our favorite parts here of the Astro Imaging Corner number one twenty-six, presented by, uh, our own Abdur Anmar.
Okay, so, uh, Astro Imaging Corner is that part of the meeting where I share the images that everybody has sent in to me. And for anyone joining us for the first time who might want to send in some images, uh, at the bottom left of the R A S C Edmonton website, there's a link to, uh, the Astro Imaging Corner email. So you can send images there and then I will share them during the regular meeting. So our first, uh, image today is sent in by Jerry Schillerbeer. And this is the Great Andromeda Galaxy. And Jerry had captured this image at Black Nugget Lake in August twenty-twenty. And the scope that Jerry was using is the Teleview NP one oh one IS and a Celestron AVX mount. And the capturing was done in NINA stacking in DSS and the processing was done entirely in Star Tools. And this is a combination of, uh, twenty-five minutes of lights and about fifteen minutes of, uh, of dark frames to calibrate those likes, lights. And one of the things I noticed about this image, uh, right away is that about this brighter star in Andromeda, uh, there's a globular cluster, which I think is about magnitude fifteen point two or so, uh, right over here, if you can see my mouse. And then I noticed two other ones here and here, and there's one other one on this side. So yeah, there are quite a few globular clusters that I've been trying to visually look at in Andromeda that, uh, Jerry has captured very nicely here. So it's, uh, nice to be able to see clusters outside the Milky Way as well. Uh, and also just to note that, uh, if anyone's looking for a scope setup, Jerry is selling this setup as well. So you can talk to him after the meeting if you're interested. Our next image is from Richard Covey, and this is the Orion Nebula in hydrogen alpha. And this is just the red, uh, sorry, not in hydrogen alpha. I think this is just the red channel and it was captured through the Skywatcher seventy-two ED. And this was with a Rising Cam IMX five seventy-one camera and an L-enhanced filter. So the red channel is mostly hydrogen alpha in this case, uh, according to Richard. And APT was used for capturing and PixInsight for the processing. So great shot there. Lots of detail in the outer cloud regions. The next image also from Richard is the sun in hydrogen alpha. And, uh, this is, uh, an image that was taken on February eleventh using a Lunt eighty millimeter single stack solar scope with the ASI one seventy-four MM camera. And this was taken using fire capture and stacked in auto-stackered and processed in PixInsight. So a lot of detail there, uh, in, in the, uh, solar surface. Next image from Richard is Comet C twenty twenty-two E three. And this was a two-hour stack using the Skywatcher one twenty ED. Uh, and this was, uh, about two hundred thirty-second exposures combined in Deep Sky Stacker and processed in PixInsight. So you can see the main tail behind and kind of a, a second, uh, dust tail at the front. But in reality, it's just one tail. The comet is just facing away from us or the comet's tail. So it looks to be showing up in front of the comet as well. And the last image from Richard, this is the California Nebula NGC one four nine nine. And Richard captured this, uh, on November twenty-five and this was a total of only two hours of exposures, uh, using the Skywatcher seventy-two ED and the Rising Cam IMX five seventy-one with the L-enhanced filter. Um, and this was, uh, captured in APT and processed in PixInsight. So very nice colors and processing there. Up next, we have an image from Ray. This is the Elephant Trunk Nebula. And, oh, uh, G one in M thirty-two. Oh yeah, someone just asked about, uh, G one in M thirty-two. Um, I'm, I'll have to take a look at that after. I'm not actually sure where G. So G one, is that an M thirty-one or M thirty-two? I wonder if that's out of the frame in that particular picture. I'll have to take a look at that after, uh, Robert. Okay. So, uh, yeah, this one is the Elephant Trunk Nebula from Ray. And the elephant's trunk is actually this little feature over here. In the beginning I had taken, it had taken me a while to see where the elephant's trunk was. It's not the entire nebula. It was this little region here that looked like an elephant's trunk. So this is a very wide field shot, which gives you some context about where the elephant's trunk is located. And this was taken under the dark skies of the Canadian Rockies using a full-frame QHY three sixty-seven camera and then Ascar three hundred millimeter scope, uh, on a GM twenty-eight mount. And this is a total of, uh, two hundred and forty subs of forty-five seconds each. Or sorry, forty-five subs of two hundred and forty seconds each. And this was, uh, stacked in APP and processed in Lightroom. So great shot there, Ray. Up next, we have the comet from Ray, C twenty twenty-two E three. And, uh, the night that Ray took this picture, there were four of them at Blackfoot. Um, and this was on a moonless, a moonless night. Uh, and again, as everyone's heard by now, this is a comet that won't be coming back for about fifty thousand years. So the temperatures were about minus three with no wind, according to Ray. And again, this was also shot with the, uh, QHY three sixty-seven full-frame camera and the Ascar three hundred millimeter scope. And this was a combination of two-minute exposures, uh, with, uh, some, some very good weather that night. So you can see a lot of detail in the tail, the nucleus and the second dust tail at the front. So great job, Ray. And that's a wider field, uh, view of the same comet, but this time with Mars in the frame as well. And this is, uh, recently taken from this week using the same setup. And this was shot at, uh, using ninety-second, or actually this is a ninety-second exposure shot at Unity Gain. And location was, uh, from top of the world near, uh, Globe, Arizona on February twelve. And the, uh, elevation was forty-five hundred feet at the time and the temperature was about me nine degrees, which is much nicer than what we've been getting here. Our next image is from Warren Finley and this is the Aurora. So Warren said that he was prompted to go outside late in the evening on Boxing Day to have a look when Jay Lavender sent out an email to the astro list saying that there was Aurora. And when, uh, Warren went outside, it was fairly bright and pulsing. So he watched for a little while and then he went in and got his camera to take this shot using the trees to hide the light trespass from the neighbor's yard lights. Um, and I've also included some of the images that people had sent in for January because in January, we ended up doing a review of the, my, my favorite images from the year. So there are going to be some images from January and some from February, uh, in this, uh, presentation. So again, very nice image. And, uh, this is another image from Warren. And not only is Warren a talented astrophotographer, he's also a sculptor. So he carved, uh, this, uh, sculpture a few weeks ago in the hope that Aurora and clear skies would happen before the sculpture melted. And sure enough, uh, he was able to get this shot and he had harvested the ice from a nearby lake and carved it over several days into this sculpture. And the sculpture weighs about or over seventy pounds. So hauling it up to the top of the fifty-foot tower at night, where he shot this photo was a bit of a grind. Uh, you're, you're more dedicated than I am to how that all the way up there. So, um, Warren says he used all natural light for this photo, which was an eight-second exposure at F two point eight and a thirty-five millimeter lens. And to get both the Aurora and the ice statue in focus, uh, Warren took two shots in quick succession. One focused on the ice and the other on the Aurora and then focus stacked them manually in Photoshop. So again, another very, very nice shot there. Our next shot is from Brian Martin, and, uh, this was taken on the morning of January twenty-five. And the image was a one-hour total integration using the ASI two ninety-four MC camera with a Stellar View one oh two RT, uh, refractor on a Paramount MX. And all three tails here are easily seen. So you can see the, uh, the dust tail, the gas tail, and then the kind of part of the dust tail showing in front of the comet as well. And the color calibration here was done using PixInsight's Spectro Photometric Color Calibration Tool. And next one from Brian is one of my favorite objects, the Crab Nebula. And this was shot on the evening of December fourteen using the same setup, uh, or the same camera, the ASI two ninety-four, but with a C fourteen at twenty-one hundred millimeter focal length, uh, with a custom-made mount. And, uh, Brian used Blur Exterminator in PixInsight, uh, and noise reduction as well as the Spectro Photometric Color Calibration. And, uh, for anyone who, uh, might not know, at the center of the Crab Nebula is the Crab Pulsar, which is the, the core of the star that formed this nebula that spins at about thirty times per second. So imagine an object the size of a city spinning at thirty times per second and it weighs more than the sun does. So this is quite a fascinating object and it's again, a beautiful shot. Oh, looks like, uh, there we go. And last image from Brian, this is the Agon Galaxy NGC eight nine one. And this was taken last year and recently processed using Blur Exterminator. This was a two-point-five hour total integration using the ASI two ninety-four camera and the C fourteen at twenty-one hundred millimeter focal length and a custom-made mount. Uh, so absolutely beautiful shot, lots of detail in this Agon Galaxy and lots of background galaxies as well. Our next shot, this is actually one from Mike Noble. And, uh, this was taken by Mike during his last year and it was sent to me by Alistair Ling. And this is from the moonrise, uh, on April seventeen. And this was a composite of, uh, four images at two hundred millimeters, all at one-fifth of a second. And this is another one from Mike Noble as well. And, uh, oh yeah, this was, uh, the, the, uh, Aurora with, uh, I presume it was with the same setup. So again, very nice image and you can see the, uh, in the background, you can see the Big Dipper. So thank you for sending those in, Alistair. And next is an image from Alistair. And, uh, basically in submitting some of these shots, Alistair says that he wants to encourage newcomers and casual sky watchers to submit images from their phones and from their cameras on tripods as well. And Alistair says that twelve-hour exposures are amazing, but yet there is a lot of beauty that can be captured in a single exposure as well. And I completely agree, uh, you know, for anyone who has seen a lot of Alistair's work using just a camera and a, a wide-field or telephoto lens, you can capture a lot with, with a simpler setup as well. And this particular shot was taken, uh, the first week of January. Uh, and this is of the Friday evening moonrise with the city of Edmonton skyline in the background. And another one from Alistair, this is a moonrise composite, uh, from the Saturday morning, uh, of the full moon. And, uh, again, this is right out of the camera, actually. Oh yeah, this one's not, not a composite then. So this one's right out of the camera, uh, with no special processing. So again, very, very nice image. And thanks for sending that in. Or actually, I do have more from Alistair. This is a wide field of a Leonid meteor. And this was actually taken with a ten-year-old camera with a kit wide-angle lens and a fifteen-second exposure. And, uh, this was back from November when the Leonids were. And right to the next, uh, sorry, right to the right of the Leonid, you can actually see the Andromeda Galaxy. And then at the top left, you see the Pleiades and the Hades star clusters. Uh, again, beautiful image. And the last image from Alistair is a wide-field view of the moon, uh, a simple pleasant sight taken with a smartphone. And you can see the, the kind of unlit portion of the moon as well. Or I guess it's being lit up by, uh, by the earth right now. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's earth shine right there. So very nice. Up next is an image from Murray Paulson. This is that giant sunspot that we had last month. And this one was shot afocally through, uh, a cell phone and, uh, Murray's William Optics GT seventy-one scope. And, uh, Murray had used his three to six millimeter eyepiece at six millimeters for this shot as well as his Badir Solar Film. So, uh, I'm sure everyone's noticed that the sun has been getting quite active lately. So we are heading towards solar maximum and it looks like it'll be, it'll be quite nice for any solar observers. Uh, the next shot is from Murray. This is Comet C twenty twenty-two E three. Uh, and actually this here is, um, uh, this was taken with the William Optics GT seventy-one at four hundred and twenty millimeters as well, using a Canon ATD at ISO sixteen hundred. Um, and this image has been resized from the full one. So you can see the, again, the ion tail, dust tail and the front part of the dust tail there and the green coma around the nucleus. And over here, we have a video as well of this comet that Murray had taken, but I'm just going to switch over to the video. There we go. Hopefully everybody can see that. So it'll start moving here in a second. So this is by combining a lot of individual exposures. Murray made this very nice time lapse where you can see the comet moving against the background of stars. So very nice. Thank you for sharing that, Murray. Okay, and, uh, this image, uh, here, uh, again, the last one from Murray, you can see the bright green nucleus of the comet on the left. And on the right, you can see, uh, the planet Mars in the same frame. Uh, so very nice composition. Again, this was with the same GT seventy-one telescope and the ATD Canon camera. The next image is from Craig Sherris. Uh, so this was taken when the comet was at a distance of forty-three million kilometers. And it was taken on the early morning of January twenty-nine, which I think was the perfect time to image the comet. Um, and, um, Craig was using an Equinox AT ED and an ASI twenty-six hundred MC Pro camera. And again, he captured all three tails in very, very nice detail. And Craig said that the nucleus of the comet is about, about one kilometer across, uh, which is quite interesting considering the comet itself can be tens of millions of kilometers across. Our next shot here is from Alan Hobbs. This is the North America Nebula. Uh, okay. So, uh, yeah, North America Nebula from Alan. And, uh, this is, this is an amalgamation of two astrophotos taken a little over a year apart at the same location. And the first was nine subs at sixty seconds and the second was forty subs at sixty seconds. And, uh, both were taken at Black Nugget Lake, Alberta, and they were processed using different techniques. And, uh, when added together, they created an astrophoto with higher contrast and brighter nebulosity. And the, both of those sets of images were taken using the Rasa eight and the ASI twenty-six hundred MC, uh, camera with an opt-long L-enhanced filter. And Alan was using his EQ six R mount and guiding with Nina. And the processing was done in Photoshop and PixInsight. Uh, so very nice image. Up next from, uh, Josephine, we have, oh, this is the Andromeda Galaxy. Now that Bubble Nebula had copied and pasted the title. So this is the Andromeda Galaxy and taken with the Nikon D fifty-three hundred DX and a White Cat fifty-one, uh, at two hundred and fifty millimeters on a Skywatcher Star Adventurer. And this is a combination of ninety-one frames. And this is a combination of 91 frames of 30 seconds each. And then Josephine used 16 darks, 16 flats and 16 bias frames to calibrate that. And it was stacked in Deep Sky Stacker and cropped and edited in Photoshop and Snapseed. And this was taken out by Wabu Man. And one thing I noticed in this image as well is that we, we can see the the globular cluster that I had looked at earlier. I was able to find it in this image as well. I've lost my bearings a little bit, but, oh yeah, so. It is, yeah, I, when I looked earlier, I was able to see at least one of the globular clusters. I think it was G 279. So again, amazing what you can do with a DSLR camera and a fairly short focal length scope as well. So thanks for sending that in. And again, we can see M32 here and NGC 110. Our next image is from Dave Mussel. This is the Orion Nebula in narrow band. And Dave says that for imagers and visual observers alike, Orion rises in the early winter and presents itself in the south under a clear sky. And at that point, resistance is futile, so you have to, to image it. And I completely agree. And this image was composed from narrow band data using a modified HSO Hubble palette from 188 exposures of two minutes each taken on the night of November 22. And the camera was a QHY 268M camera and the telescope was his Explorer Scientific 127 ED. And it was reduced to a 666 millimeter focal length. And the processing challenge was with the Orion Nebula is dealing with the extreme differences in brightness between the trapezium in the center compared to a lot of the dimmer outer regions. So the problem was addressed in PixInsight by using a series of selective mask stretches to preserve the trapezium region while raising the brightness of success, of successively wider regions in the nebula and the surrounding molecular cloud. So it seems to have worked out very, very well there, Dave. So phenomenal shot. And our next image, also from Dave, this is the Eagle Nebula and another phenomenal narrow band shot. This was, this is a reprocessed and revised version of the image that Dave had collected last March in New Mexico and had presented in an astro imaging corner earlier this year. So this version is cropped from a small section of the original and enhanced with Blur Exterminator in PixInsight, which is a deconvolution plugin for anyone who hasn't used that. And the tool uses sophisticated algorithms to reduce stars and correct optical aberrations while restoring details in the surrounding nebular structure. So that shows how much detail Dave was able to recover in the Eagle Nebula. And this nebula was actually the one featured in that famous Hubble Space Telescope image titled The Pillars of Creation. And it was recently reimagined by the James Webb Space Telescope as we saw in the presentation earlier. And the Hubble version is mind boggling, but the JWST version contains orders of magnitude more detail. And it reveals thousands of hot young protostars nestled deep in the nebular structure that were unseen by Hubble or any previous instrument. So again, thanks for sending that in, Dave. And again, very, very nice shot. Up next, we have an image from Al, and this is a photo of Mars just a few seconds after it had emerged from behind the moon on the evening of December 7. And this was obtained through a 10 inch dog using eyepiece projection. So that's basically when you hold your camera or your cellphone right to the, to the eyepiece there. And that looks phenomenal. You can actually see some detail on Mars there. And this was a stack of multiple video frames and then they were processed in PIPP, AutoStacker, Registax and Photoshop. So in addition to Mars, Al says that this particular shot is interesting because due to the libation at the eastern part of the moon, there is a hidden or in the shadows part of the moon which has rotated into view. And the image shows Mare Marginus and Mare Sithai. Not sure I'm pronouncing those correctly, almost on the limb and very close to Mars. So very nice. Thanks for sharing. And up next is one of my recent images that I had posted to the astro list there. And this was taken with a Celestron C11 Edge with Hyperstar and my ASI 1600 mono camera. And this was a total of only 3.9 hours of exposures. So I do hope to redo this in the future when I get a couple of months of clear skies, maybe, so I can get enough data. And you can see at the top, the bright region there that is Messier 32. And then you've got, sorry, MM 110, not NGC 110, as I said earlier. And I'd had to do quite a bit of research for a YouTube video I was recently making about this galaxy. So some of the interesting stuff I'd found, there is a black hole at the core of this galaxy that has a mass of 140 million solar masses, so 140 million times more than our sun, which is quite a bit more powerful and quite a bit more active than the black hole at the center of the Milky Way. And for anyone who might be wondering, the reason the core of the galaxy is so bright is not because of the black hole, but just the higher density of stars near the core, they're just clustered together. So again, yeah, very nice galaxy with over a trillion stars, so absolutely mind boggling. And it is traveling towards us about, at about 400,000 kilometers an hour. So it will be colliding with the Milky Way in about five billion years. So, and I also wanted to share one of my earlier images. I always see that thing online where it's like how it started and how it's going. So sometimes I like looking at some of my older images to see the progress that I'm making each year. And this is an image that I'm still very proud of because it was basically the first time I actually had a telescope and a mount. And this was maybe a year into that, into doing astro imaging. But I was able to capture the dust lane, so very happy about that. And I was able to get the little satellite galaxies. And the last image, this is my recent image of the Wolfereyat star called WR 134. And that's the star right in the middle here. And these shells of gas were rejected by that star during various, various past instances of instability where it was just exploding and shooting all this matter off into space. So eventually that star is going to go supernova, but in the meantime, it will continue to lose a significant amount of mass to outbursts like this, where it will keep shooting material off into space. So this particular image was probably my, one of my longest, at least if not my longest at 33 hours. And this was again with the C11 Edge HD Hyperstar and the ASI 1600 camera. And this was again taken on my EQ 6R Pro mount. So that's all we have for today. So a huge thank you to everyone who sent in some images and I, you know, hope to see more next time. For anyone who had sent me some, or who had sent me a lot of images and I wasn't able to show all of them today in the interest of time. I have saved those ones for later, so I will share them at the next regular meeting. Perfect. Okay, so I will stop sharing.
Thank you so much, Abdur, and thank you to everyone who submitted images. Very nice. Actually, I would say amazing. The talent in this center is like second to none when it comes to astro imaging. Very well done. Okay, we are just in the final stretch here, I hope. Let's bring up our agenda. We can see that. Okay, so we'll just, we'll wrap up things, maybe. So just quickly on our astronomical trivia. I think everybody maybe had a chance to look at it. I left it up during the intermission there. So do I have any guesses, any shout outs as to what we're looking at here? Anyone? Pleiades, I hear Pleiades. Pleiades. It's not the Hyades. Okay, here we go. Messier 44, NGC 2632, also known as the Beehive Cluster. Well, the screen, yeah, was, I think during the break, we had the whole thing up there, but. So, and it's in the constellation Cancer. Approximately 1,000 stars, one of the first objects studied by Galileo. And contains, it's actually an area of interest because of the many various types of stars. Everything from the red giants to white dwarfs to main sequence stars. And, and even a couple of Cepheids, actually, so. And thanks to Brian Martin for submitting that picture. Okay. Just a few announcements here before we call it a night. So Observers Group, so run by John Stolti and sometimes Berta also helps host the Observers Group. So that's this, this Wednesday, actually, 7:30 is the first, is the next one coming up. So Zoom info is available on our website. And Jeff's What's Up Over Edmonton also this Wednesday. So I just bring it up here because it's before the next members meeting. And so again, if you haven't seen a What's Up Over Edmonton hosted by Jeff, you don't know what you're missing. So not only is it, you know, super informative, but Jeff's a pretty entertaining guy to present the information. So it's usually about an hour, Jeff, about an hour. And so. So try to, try to attend those because it really is worth it. So next member meeting, of course, is Monday, March 13th coming up here. And we have an Astro Imaging Cafe coming up on March 15th. And I think Richard Colby would like to come up and say just a couple of quick words on the AstroImaging Cafes.
Thanks, Jay. Just a quick announcement again. On March 15th, meeting on the Astro Cafe by Zoom this month. We will be offering some data from, I'm trying to get some from the Southern Hemisphere for us all to kind of process. And then on March 15th, we'll bring in all of our images and discuss them, how we process them and how they kind of look different from each other. So that's the intention there. And I'll make a announcement on Facebook and the email group of where to be able to download this information. So that'll come in a few days. All are welcome to participate in this and it might be a really good way to kind of practice your skills somehow and, and to learn some new skills from others. And also there will be a $25 gift certificate to the winner, not chosen by me, but just a little something to, to get people excited for. And that's what, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Yeah, so Richard will be spearheading the AstroImaging Cafes and probably a few future workshops on astro imaging. That's obviously the, the, one of the go to skills that has a lot of interest of new and old astro imagers. And so Richard told me he's got a lot of spare time on his hands. And so he's really interested in hearing from the membership as far as what your interests are when it comes to astro imaging, whether that be cameras, software or whatever. And he will be trying to piece together cafes and other workshops again to, to support, you know, the membership in, in astro imaging. So I also did just want to quickly mention as well that in Brian Martin's presentation at last meeting, he presented that Solx Spectro-Heliograph. And I have brought one today for Richard that Richard has. So if anybody would like to look at that Spectro-Heliograph, it's a pretty good, pretty cool tool. And we'll be looking forward to some more presentations on that in the future. One last thing, and I hate to kind of end on a, not a great note, but I feel obligated to mention to our membership that we got a little bit of a disconcerting national financial picture tossed to us a couple of weeks ago from the National RASC, that they were having some financial difficulties for various reasons. They called a special consultation meeting with the presidents of all the centers across Canada as well as the National Council reps. And basically presented somewhat bleak financial picture to us and asked all the centers for input on what they thought they should do or what we would recommend for them to do. Ultimately, the National Council is going to make a series of recommendations to the board as far as what to, how to proceed and how to stabilize the financial picture of, of the national group. And so I again, just felt I had to give the heads up to our members that a couple of the recommendations that that National Council is making, one of them is to sell off the RASC Robotic Telescope that we purchased a few years ago. It's in California. It's a pretty good outreach tool and educational tool, but does come at a fairly high cost. And the other one that's, I think, I find personally disturbing is that they are probably looking at shutting down the Sky News Magazine that everybody gets every year. So that's not great news. We did our best to collect up our opinion and our thoughts to let the National Council know and the board know of our dissatisfaction with the situation that we're in. And they were meeting with the board, I think it was yesterday, actually, was the, the National Council to Board Meeting. So, so we'll just keep everybody posted on what transpired there. John Stolti and Sukrit Alawalia, of course, are our National Council reps. So if you have any questions or anything else like that, by all means, their email addresses are on the website. So if you have any questions, by all means, email them. Okay, so on that note, that's really where we're at. I thank everybody again for your, for coming tonight and participating, whether in person or on, in virtual land. And apologies for the technical difficulties, but I'm sure we'll get that ironed out as things go on. So based on that, I will now call the meeting adjourned.